Ladies and gentlemen, I am Steve Jones, Chair of the Calver County Planning Commission. Tonight is March 16th, 2022. This is our regular meeting. I'll call the meeting to order and take roll call. Vice Chair Bueller.
Here.
Commissioner Freeland.
Here.
Commissioner Holler.
Here.
Commissioner Kernan.
Here.
Commissioner Tui.
Here.
And Commissioner Williams.
Here.
All present, can we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, please be seated. We'll entertain an action on the proposed agenda.
Motion to approve this evening's agenda.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Kernan, seconded by Commissioner Tui. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Carolyn?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Carolyn Sunderland, Deputy Director of Planning with the Department of Planning and Zoning. I will be acting as the Planning Commission Administrator for tonight's meeting. This meeting will be conducted as a hybrid meeting, allowing for both virtual and in-person participation. Serving as moderator tonight is Christine Finnamore, I mean, sorry, Christine Goldsmith, our new Planning Commission Development Review Coordinator. Assisting her is Christine Finnamore, our Planner Three Development Review. Now, we will go over the rules for adequate for the meeting. Christine?
Good evening. I'm Chris Goldsmith, Development Review Coordinator for Calver County Planning and Zoning, and I'll also be acting as moderator this evening. This meeting is being recorded on both video and audio for record viewing purposes. For those attending virtually or on your phone, please keep yourself muted to ensure no interruptions to the evening. For those of you calling in, if asked to speak, you can mute and unmute yourself by using the buttons on your cell phone or by dialing star six. For those of you on a computer, if asked to speak, you can mute and unmute your audio by moving your mouse and using the buttons on the toolbar in the bottom left of your screen. You can also mute or unmute yourself by using keyboard shortcuts. On Windows, you can press Alt+A. On a Mac, you can press Command+Shift+A. When questions or comments are requested in public, those attending in person will be asked to speak first, and those attending virtually will speak after. If you're attending virtually and would like to ask a question or make comment, please go to the comments icon on your Zoom screen and type your comment into that section. If you're attending via phone, you would like to ask a question or make a comment when asked, please use the raise hand function. Finally, please say your name every time you speak for the benefit of those calling in who cannot see you.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to go over and recognize persons attending the meeting tonight.
Yes, ma'am.
Tonight, we have from the Department of Planning and Zoning, Mary Beth Cook, Director, Jenny Plummer Welker, Long Range Planner, Chris Spurling, Planner Three Historic, Olivia Vedotto, Planner Three Development Review, Chris Finnamore, Principal Planner Development Review, Kat Lotwood, Planner One. Also, from the Department of Parks and Recreation, we have Sean Meredith, who is the Park Safety Division Chief, and from the Department of Public Works, Jason Levitt, Project Engineer Two. Also in attendance with us tonight is John Mattingly, providing legal counsel, and Becky Parkinson, serving as the recording clerk. Next up is Item Five, Applications for Site Plan Review and Action. We have one item, Item 5A, is SPR 2020-315, Dunkirk District Park Tennis Courts and Parking Lot. Olivia Vedotto, Planner Three, will be presenting the case.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone.
Evening.
My name is Olivia Vedotto with Planning and Zoning. I will wait for the slide to come up. Get started with the introduction, though. So, this site plan is SPR-2020-315, the Dunkirk Park Tennis Courts. You can go to the next slide, please. This is the tax map overview. You can see that the Dunkirk Park is across from the Calver Gateway Shopping Center when you're coming into the county on the right-hand side. Next slide, please. Excuse me. This is an aerial, just so you can see the portions of the park that are developed currently, and there is a lot of existing forest and woodland already onsite. Next slide, please. And this is the site plan, so, and I apologize, you all. I am, like, losing my voice tonight, so. This is a Category One site plan that requires approval by the Calver County Planning Commission. This project was submitted prior to the current three-step process, which we have in place currently for site plans that you've gotten used to. So, the concept was submitted back in February of 2020. So, this plan presented tonight is actually the site plan, which would be what we now call the Detailed Site Plan that comes in after conceptual approval that you all are now seeing with site plans. So, the property is located in Dunkirk. It has frontage onto Maryland Route Four, also known as Southern Maryland Boulevard. The zoning is rural community district. A lot of people think that the property is in the Dunkirk Town Center, but it is not. The overall site consists of 81.42 acres with existing active and passive recreation areas. Staff has reviewed the site plan for compliance with the Calver County Comprehensive Plan, the Calver County Zoning Ordinance, and other applicable ordinances and regulations. Per the ordinance, Section 3-1.10 through 12, this is an allowed use as a public recreation facility. So, the proposal is for five new tennis courts, four dedicated pickleball courts, additional parking, and a restroom, all within approximately 4.07 acres. Forest conservation has not been addressed previously on this site. There is a replating that will be recorded with 23.6 acres of forested area, which will meet the forest retention area requirements for the entire site. Along with this development, 15 specimen trees were required to be removed, and that required Board of Appeals' approval. The Board of Appeals approved this on March 3rd, 2022. Thank you very much, Jenny. The Board of Appeals' order is also attached to your package. The Board of Appeals asked the applicant to consider the lumber shortage and possibly utilize the specimen trees for lumber production if the wood was not used onsite. So, also included is your pa- in your package is a memo from Public Works dated April 8th, 2022 that outlines the measures that are being researched for that. Parking requirements for this were four parking spaces per court, which would require 36 parking spaces, and they are providing 75, which four of those are ADA parking spaces. Excuse me. Any outstanding comments shall be addressed prior to final approval and signature of the site plan. The comments outstanding are attached to your package, but I'm going to go through what is in my staff report. So, for SPR-2020-315, Dunkirk Park Tennis Courts, staff recommends approval with subject to the following conditions. Any significant deviation from the site plan as presented will require re-submit a revised site plan for review and comment by the applicable agencies and reapproval by the Planning Commission or its designee before the detailed site development plan can move forward. All outstanding comments from the site plan review shall be addressed prior to final site plan approval and signature. The replating for the forest retention areas shall be approved and recorded prior to approval of the final site plan. Any note shall be included with that information on the site plan. A note shall be added to the site plan with the Board of Appeals' case number and information for the removal of the specimen trees. Staff is recommending two electric charging stations to be installed within the parking area, along with one designated bus parking space. Staff is recommending that a water fountain be provided. A photometric plan shall be submitted, reviewed, and approved prior to final site plan approval. All of the environmental comments that are included in your package shall also be addressed prior to final site plan approval. So, if you have any questions of myself or staff that is here regarding the Board of Appeals, the trees, or anything else related to the park and the phasing of what it will be done, we will certainly be happy to answer any of those questions. Your next steps after that would be approval with the conditions as listed above, as recommended by staff, approval with modification to those conditions, deferral if the Planning Commission requires additional information prior to action or denial of the project, which will require the applicant to make design changes and resubmit to Planning and Zoning for agency review prior to reconsideration by the Planning Commission. So, again, if you have any questions that I can answer, I'm happy to, and if I can't, we have staff here that can.
Commissioners, any questions?
I do have a question, Mr. Chairman. Olivia, in general, our parking regulations tend to get followed pretty closely. I've noticed there's a pattern. If you say, "We need 36," usually people put in 36. Is there a reason why they're going to 75? It's a lot of impermeable surface.
I don't want to assume. I will turn, let one of them answer. I do know that a lot of people play tennis, and pickleball is, like, the rage the last couple of years, and I don't really know anything about pickleball. It's on my list of things to try, but I work too much. But I'll let, I'll let one of the gentlemen answer that question.
They're ready.
I am Sean Meredith, Park and Safety Division Chief. In, in general, Olivia's on track with her mode of thinking. The minimums are typically, you know, well over that a lot of times within the parks. A lot of adjacent things to that area would benefit as well, but main thing being, we do host tournaments. You know, being two parking spaces per court, you know, doesn't allow for double play or, you know, overlapping games and round-robin tournaments, whatever you might, you know, bring up. So, we want to make sure there's adequate parking and, and safe for the things around it when kids and that are running through the park.
I notice there's a lot of other parking around that area. Is that parking fully used now, or?
Yes, yes, to the fullest extent.
Okay. Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Sean, thank you.
Good job, Sean.
Thanks.
Hey, Olivia, can you show us on the aerial where the tennis court will be sited?
I can certainly try, and if not, Sean, you might want to stay up there. Can you go back to the aerial, please?
It's the one before that, yeah.
Yeah.
There you go.
Where's it going, Sean?
Yeah, because I'm, need glasses with me, too.
Sean, can you point it out on that screen right behind you?
Yeah, you guys want to?
Yeah.
It'll be this area right here.
Yes.
You can almost, uh, grass will change and there's different trees here.
So, that's just south of the newest multipurpose soccer field? Okay, gotcha.
That's correct. It's essentially, if you know the park, it's between fields four and seven, seven being the football field all the way to the back.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
I've got one other question, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Olivia, on your comments, there are several comments that are recommendations?
Yes.
Are they required?
They are recommendations.
Simply recommendations.
Simply recommendations.
What's the cost to the project for them to comply with your recommendations?
That I cannot answer. So, the recommendation for two electric charging stations, I don't know what the cost is, but I can certainly find that out. Between us, we can find out. There are a lot of electric cars and all the initiatives that are out there now for, I believe it's 2025, and then again in 2030. It was a recommendation. We don't have that in our ordinance yet. The recommendation for the bus parking, you figure how many schools are going to be coming there with tournaments and all? So, that was another one that should, staff felt there should be at least one parking space for a bus, because they're going to end up going in there and just laterally going across six or seven parking spaces.
The point I'm trying to make is sometimes the recommendations are adding costs to the project. You know, that ought to be kept in consideration. When you make the recommendation, you ought to have some idea of what cost you're adding to the project.
I will take that into consideration, but part of, part of the reason for asking it was the necessity of it, you know? And then with the water fountain, there's going to be a new bathroom, so a water fountain should not add that much cost, but I know every little bit adds up. But I'd be happy to find out with these guys what the cost would be.
Yeah, you know, and, and with the electric vehicle stations, I know, I'd like to see the parks have the ability to add those stations where they believe they would be most useful. Same with the bicycle rack.
Any other questions, Commissioners? Do I have anyone in the audience that wants to make public comment? Anyone virtual? Okay. All right, fantastic. I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion in a matter of SPR 2023-15. The Planning Commission approves this request.
Motion by Commissioner Tui.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Freeland. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Olivia, thank you very much.
Thank you, guys. Next item on the agenda, we have Item Six, Items for Discussion and Action. We have two items. The first is Item 6A, SPR 14-1052, Oyster Bay Condominiums Phases A through C Extension Request. Olivia will also be presenting.
Thank you. So, the background on this, the property is located off of Oyster Bay Place, which is off of Dow Road in Dow. It is a phased project of condominium units. Phases A through C are the final portion of the development. The site plan received approval on October 13th, 2019, with an expiration date of October 13th, 2020. So, due to COVID, the Maryland State of Emergency and Calver County both put in tolling, which was related for permits, plans, and approvals. Started March 5th, 2020, and it ended July 4th, 2021, but the tolling ended 30 days after that. So, the actual end date is August 4th, 2021. Based on the applicable dates, the number of days would be added to the original expiration date, and in this case, it's 222 days. That resulted in an expiration date of March 15th, 2022, which obviously we already passed now, but the site plan was still active when the applicant requested the information, and staff recommended that the applicant request a one-year extension from the Planning Commission. And in talking with them, there were a lot of delays, obviously, with COVID, and then when they were finally trying to get the project off the ground, it was shortage of supplies, labor, and they really want to finish out this project. So, staff is recommending approval of a one-year extension, which if approved, the new expiration date would be March 25th, 2023. For SPR-14-1052, Oyster Bay Condominiums Phase A through C, the extension request, the Planning Commission may consider, after you have any questions, of course, approval with conditions as listed above, as recommended by staff, approval with modification to the conditions, deferral if the Planning Commission requires additional information prior to action or denial of the project, which will require the applicant to make design changes and resubmit to Planning and Zoning for agency review, pardon me, prior to consideration by the Planning Commission. So, if you have any questions that I can answer, I'm happy to.
Commissioners, any questions?
Olivia, I'm a little wondering why the expiration date is March 25th. It's not a year from today or a year from the expiration date. Seems like it's kind of a random date.
So, with the tolling, you have to look at the parameters of the tolling dates themselves, and then where does the expiration date fall within that? Because basically, what happens with tolling is anything that's active is frozen in time. And for however long that length of time is where you fall in that window, you calculate the number of days, that gets added to your previous, you know, expiration. So, all the dates are going to come out different as we move forward getting them. And in this case, it just didn't work out for him.
All right, thank you.
Yeah.
So, they're asking to extend this because of COVID?
Yes.
And material shortages? Is that what I'm understanding?
Yes.
And has there been any extensions prior to now?
No, no. And we pulled the March 25th, 2023, giving him the benefit of that tolling date. So, his tolling, and, and actually, again, coming off of that with the number of dates versus going off of the old expiration date.
Olivia, I have a question.
Yeah.
In the discussion, the date is referred to as March 15th to 2022. In the conclusion, your ex- new expiration date is March 25th, 2023. Is that correct?
That is correct.
You good, Carolyn?
Yes.
Okay. Commissioners, any other questions? Is there anyone in the audience that wants to make comment? Anyone virtual? Okay. Is there anyone virtual at all?
Just two staff members.
Okay.
I'm sorry, just two staff members.
I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I recommend approval of SPR-14-1052, Oyster Bay Condominium Phases A through C for one-year extension.
Motion by Commissioner Kernan?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Tui. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you very much.
Olivia, stay, please. Chairman Jones, I would like to get a point of clarification on the previous item, Item Five. Did the, the motion was for approval of the project as presented, but it, does that include the eight conditions recommended by staff?
Commissioner Tui made the motion.
I certainly intended to do that, but I did not say it.
When I gave my second, I intended as well.
Then I apologize.
Can we get a friendly amendment, then?
I would like to amend my prior motion and state that we should do this
Approval?
With appro- this approval with the conditions expressed by staff above.
Commissioner Freeland, you were the second?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Olivia.
Okay, the next item before the Planning Commission is Item 6B, Calver County Historic District Design Guidelines. Christopher Spurling, Planner Three Historic, will be presenting.
Good evening. Background. In fiscal year 2020, the Maryland Historical Trust awarded the Calver County Department of Planning and Zoning a certified local government grant to revise the Calver County Historic District Design Guidelines. The document provides historic district owners guidelines with appropriate approaches and materials for the restoration and rehabilitation, and are used by the Historic District Commission when considering historic area work permits and historic preservation tax credits. The current guidelines were approved and adopted in 2001. Discussion. In the more than 20 years since adoption of the current guidelines, several changes have occurred to approaches in historic preservation. This includes the development of new materials that more closely approximate historic materials, climate change slash sea level rise, and the emergence of telecommunications and the increase of alternative energies such as solar and geothermal. The revised guidelines will consider these advancements as they apply to the preservation of historic districts in Calver County and update guidance to reflect current trends in the field. The Calver County Historic District Commission approved the revised guidelines at a regular meeting held on September 8th, 2021. Fiscal impact: none. Staff time used as a match for the grant was previously allocated. Grant funds were used to contract services from the firm of Murphy &amp; Depp &amp; Hoffer Architects. The historic preservation tax credit remains unchanged. Conclusion recommendations. The current guidelines are outdated. Staff recommends approval of the revised Calver County Historic District Guidelines specifically for this evening and this work session. Our goal is to ensure that the Planning Commission concurs that the guidelines are consistent with the County Comprehensive Plan and approve them for agency comment. If the Commission would like, I have prepared a short presentation.
Please.
Ahead, please. So, as a bit of background, Chapter 57 in the county code first created the Calver County Historic Districts and the Historic District Commission. Next, please. The first historic district, Patuxent Manor, was, was declared in 1974, and the most recent historic district, Preston-on-Patuxent, in 2019. Presently, there are 95 historic districts throughout the county, and this map, you can see that they are distributed relatively evenly across the county. These are the current guidelines. They were adopted in 2021. As a point of reference, next, please. Other things that occurred in 2021, we elected this individual for his first term in office.
This was 2001.
Oh, sorry, 2001. This is what we thought of as a cellphone. Next, please. Since 2020, since 2001, here we see the, the use of new technologies, in this case, scanning technologies, so that if historic fabric is destroyed, it can be reproduced in a perfect reproduction. That technology was not around. Next, please. And of course, the effects of climate change. This is not Calver County. This is in Virginia. It's a cemetery that is, is eroding into the Chesapeake Bay. We do have these issues here as well, just want to mention. As far as the revised guidelines, they've been updated to be in a more user-friendly format. One of the things that we appreciate is it puts the definitions directly up front so that you can, you have them right at, you know, easy, easy disposal rather than fumbling for them somewhere in the back. Please. We also address new topics, accessibility, alternative materials, new technologies, and climate threat mitigation. As far as next step, we are seeking, and I apologize, this has changed slightly. The next step is after we can get agency comments, we would come back to the Planning Commission to review agency comments and proceed to a joint Public Planning Commission, Board of County Commissioners meeting to receive public comment and to take action, hopefully approving the guidelines for adoption. If the Commission has any questions, I'll take them now.
Commissioners, any questions? I have a really funny question. That coin right there, is that a real coin?
That is the plaque that historic district owners are given when, when they're designated.
I collect challenge coins, so when I saw that, I know I didn't have that coin, so.
It would be a challenge to pry them, because most of them are now set in the masonry or.
Wouldn't think of it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have any questions from the audience? And any questions from Commissioners? No? I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I recommend approval of Calver County Historic District Design Guidelines, that they be sent out for agency approval.
Motion by Commissioner Kernan?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Tui. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much, sir. Thank you. And if you ever come across one of those challenge coins.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is Item Seven, which is Items of Interest. We have one. 7A is the Adequate Public Facilities Reports for Schools for April 1st, 2022. No action is required on this. This is information only. If there are no questions on the APFO, I will go on to Item Eight, which is a vote to reschedule the Joint Public Hearing and Planning Commission Meeting to April 28th, 2022.
Okay, so that's moving to reschedule the Joint Public Hearing to next week on the 28th. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
So, moved by Commissioner Kernan?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Tui. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Chairman Jones. Next item is Item Nine, which is Public Comment. At this time, we will open the meeting up for public comment. According to the Calver County Zoning, Calver County Ordinance Number 5121, Planning Commission Chair will first request comments from those attending in person and then those attending virtually. Speakers, whether in person or pro- Speakers, whether in person or participating by phone or virtually, will be limited to two minutes as individuals and five minutes if they represent an organization. Do we have any in-person comments? Any staff? Okay, we have no one wishing to speak tonight.
Okay. Mary Beth, you sure you don't have anything you want to say? No, I'm just kidding.
We'll go on to the next item, which is Item 10, Adjournment.
Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Commissioner Tui, second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Kernan. All in favor?
Aye.
I would imagine we have none opposed. Have a good night. God bless.